I got snippets, but.
Are we ready? The first for so long, my.
So you're Republican?
No, I'm independent.
All right, call to order at five thirty P M. Good evening and welcome to the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four board meeting of Solomon University School District. This meeting is now in session. Roll call. Mister Medina.
Here.
Mrs. Ellen is.
Present.
Mrs. Kessler.
Here.
Mister Fedora.
Here.
And I'm here myself. May I have a motion to accept this agenda?
I make a motion to accept the agenda.
We have a motion, we have a second prime mark, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, notice to the public, public comments on a closed session agenda item. This opportunity is provided in accordance with the government accord section five four nine five four point three to allow the public to comment prior to the board's consideration of any closed session agenda item. So we will now go into the closed sessions and we will be back at six.
Thank you.
Is it?
Yeah.
Should I get closer? These last weeks for school have been very meaningful. Last week, our counseling department hosted a college and career fair. Where students got to meet with employees and schools. And last night, we had our senior night for boys and girls water polo team. Our leadership team helped out by creating senior posters for each one of them. And setting up our custom senior night order backdrop. This morning, we had our senior meeting where Justin's came and talked about what is coming up and how to order our caps and gowns. And our advisors also talked to us about our senior, senior trip to our Boston studios. And our leadership team is very busy getting ready for our homecoming rally and game. We are very excited for that. This year's theme is Oski and Knox at the game on October 4th. We will be, we will host a pre-game rally parade. And at halftime, we will be crowning our homecoming queen and king. Additionally, each class will present their class flow and perform their group dances. Now to continue, we have our athletic report. The football bears had a very big win at really last night, winning 28. The Bears are three and two with a bye week for this week. As they prepare for the Emmanuel Eagles October 4th, which is homecoming. For water polo, we had our senior night, which was yesterday, last night versus Central, Central High School. The boys won 15 to five. Both teams open up Tree County Conference and play Thursday at Hemphyr West. Volleyball starts Tree County Conference play tonight at home versus Washington Union. Games start, games not. Game times are four thirty, five thirty, and six thirty. Tennis host CBS today at three thirty PM. Hope to see you all there on at homecoming October 4th. Go Bears. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a student board from ALMS? The Lonnie Perez or Casey Berry?
Good evening. My name is Casey Berry, and this is the ALMS school report. Parent teacher conferences. This week, we are in minimum day schedule to accommodate parent teacher conferences. Students are released daily at one PM. Conferences run Monday through Friday from one thirty to three thirty PM in the ALMS cafeteria. Parents can meet with any or all of their students' teachers during this time for updates on grades and behavior. Six-week progress reports were sent home via Parent Square last Friday. However, parents who come to parent teacher conferences are also given a hard copy of their child's progress report. School spirit rally, rallies are back at ALMS. Our first rally of the year will be held next Friday, October 4th. The theme is once an eagle, always an eagle. Along with promoting school spirit, we will also be showcasing fall athletes and the choir. Athletics, our only home cross-country meet will take place this Thursday at ALMS from three thirty PM through four thirty PM. Students will be running on and near ALMS to compete, to complete their two-mile course. This Saturday, September 28th, will be our first home football game of the season, starting at nine AM at Salma High's Stanley Stadium. We would love it if you could stop by. Thank you for your, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public inputs, the member of the public wishing to address the Board of Education on a matter within the jurisdiction of the board, but not on this agenda may do so during the public comments period for up to three minutes. Public comment on a specific agenda items are heard under that item. For public record, please state your name. Do we have any public comments this evening? All right, we got none, all right. We're going to move into discussion and action item. Superintendent attendance and enrollment presentation, Dr. Dillon.
So tonight, we have another own, another one of our monthly board data presentations. Uh, Dr. David Deal is here tonight to present data on our district's attendance and enrollment trends, providing valuable insights into how we can continue to support and engage our students as they come each day to our schools.
Thank you, and good evening. Good evening.
So tonight, we're going to give you an overview of the current state of our enrollment. We'll look at our chronic absenteeism and enrollment for the entire last year because the last time we did this report was February of last year, and we'll give you an end of the year report. We'll also hear from our representatives, our principal and our community liaison from Indianola Elementary School. They'll be our school spotlight tonight. So when we're counting enrollment, we're counting our students in TK through 12th who attend any of our programs. We are not counting preschool students. We're not counting students that are in our adult transition program. And we're not counting students who might be here from Fresno County Office of Education, receiving special services. When we're looking at absenteeism, chronic absenteeism and absenteeism, and what's counted through ADA, we're counting our kindergarteners through 12th. Although we look at the data for TK in what we report to the state is kindergarten through 12th. We took this graph and gave the School Works credit. You might have seen this graph before. This was the graph that School Works, Ken Peterson, had presented when we were talking about school boundaries and the impact of the slightly declining enrollment, not only declining enrollment in Selma, but in many of the districts in the state of California. So it shows that the projections from the past 10 years and, and what will happen in the next six years. They're broken down by elementary, middle, and high school. And although the enrollment has declined over the past 10 years, it's projected to go down over the next six years. You'll notice in this particular year, you see a little bit of a bump, but we had an unusual, unusually large senior class last year. That cohort was about 15% bigger than our normal senior class. So that, that caused a little bit of a, an anomaly bump there. We wanted to compare, just give you a, an overview of that first couple of weeks of school, what we're looking at enrollment wise and looking at August 2022 through August of 2024. And we're seeing fifty-nine oh two and two years ago, we bumped up a little bit last year. And then again, dropping down a little bit. And I would again point to that, that larger class in the senior year cohort that would reflect that number of what it's dropped down this year. Any questions so far on that? Okay. So I wanted to give you a picture of the end of the year comparison so that you can see what has taken place. When, when we spoke to you this time last year, we had said we were, be happy to see a 1% increase in our average daily attendance. That, that would be a significant bump. We also looked at projections and we wanted to reduce chronic absenteeism by three to 5%. So you'll see that we did increase average daily attendance by a, by a percent. That equates to a positive number of 7,534 school days that were added. District-wide, we reduced chronic absenteeism by 4.15%. And let me just pause for a second to refresh everybody on, on what chronic absenteeism is. That's when a student misses 10% or more of the school year. So if a student was enrolled the entire year, that's 180-day school year. Eighteen or more absences would be considered chronically absent. And that's excused absences and unexcused and day suspended. So we don't look at whether or not it was due to illness or just playing hooky or being suspended. If they missed a day of school, we factor that in to how we look at missing school because every day is important. So 18 or more days for a full school year would, would deem a child chronically absent. What we're really proud of though is if down there with the little asterisk is chronic absenteeism reduction for elementary was down a little over 10%. And that's a very significant drop because we were at roughly 23% last year in our elementary schools chronic absenteeism. And we are down on average 13% now. So that's a, a significant drop that we would point to the hard work of the school sites of our liaisons and just utilizing, you know, that parent engagement, student connection philosophy. Our first 16 days. The numbers all of a sudden looked a little bit like, hey, what happened? ADA is down just a tad. Total number of days, chronic absenteeism increased a little bit. Again, we're looking at just the first 16 days. And we would, we know that anecdotally, we had a lot of, kind of COVID had spiked again during the summer. So we, we had more absences due to that potentially. We certainly aren't going to base projections on the 16 days, but it's the data that we had. We wanted to at least be transparent with that and provide you with it. We're confident that we will continue to see strong numbers in student attendance and a reduction in chronic absenteeism. Our strategies to increase attendance and enrollment is, as far as enrollment, again, we're, we're highlighting the great things that we're doing here. We're enhancing our credit recovery opportunities for students. We're increasing our TK enrollment through social media, direct mailers, flyers. We've reduced inter-district transfers by removing barriers and issues for families that otherwise were looking to transfer out to another district. And we've been able to accommodate them and show them the great things that are going on here and, and change their mind and allow them to stay. Continue to promote all the positive things that are going on again through our social media, through our communications department and through our newsletter. As far as attendance, we've been strong in our parent education and parent engagement. Liaisons and social workers and our mental health clinicians continue to support our students at the different levels of need. Continuing to make our curriculum interesting, enhancing our student, our after-school programs. um, enhancing our student, our after-school programs, uh, the increased mental health supports, the data that we're using, um, A2A or now School Solutions through our attendance monitoring. So we're using our, our student information system and our data to really drive what we're doing, adding a Saturday Academy this year that will allow us to recover, not only recover absences from students, but provide students enrichment and, um, academic supports on, on a Saturday, and then just continuing to improve our culture, climate at each school for the students and making it a, the best district that we can for our children, our children and students. Are there any questions on the enrollment and attendance thus far?
I have some.
Okay.
So let's go, so since 2000, I'm just gonna go back to the last four years. So since 2000, um, we've kind, kind of lost, okay, wait a minute. We're kind of progressively going down, 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 right? So, and you, okay, so, um, if we go to the end of year, 23, 24, compared to then, so you say that's the 10%, 10.15% for elementary. What about middle school and high school?
Middle school and high schools' chronic absenteeism went down approximately 2%,
22%?
Two.
Oh, two. For each one or combined?
They both had. One was just a little bit under two, like 1.9, and the other one was 2%. So rounded off 2% for the middle school and 2% reduction for the high school. So that's, that's the students that are chronically absent.
Okay. So if you go to, uh, strategies to increase attendance and enrollment, um, what is the attendance rate for Saturday Academy?
We're kicking it off right now. It'll be, it'll, we'll kick it off in October, um, third week.
I thought we already had one. Didn't we have one, Ed?
Last year, we had, uh, how many, there's a pilot.
We, we ran, we, we did like a walkthrough with the, the infrastructure to build the Saturday Academy. We have to get teachers. There's a lot of things that have to, to get on board in order to get up and run the academy. So we were hoping to do some, a slow, like a, a couple of soft, you know, rollout. Since the high school already had Saturday School built in place, the Saturday Academy team went over to look and see what Mr. Lane already had in place and the, and the good things that were going on. Um, so we're really just building the infrastructure and getting teacher interest. We're starting in October because you want to wait till absences have accrued. If we were to start right away in August, there wouldn't be any absences to recover. So you have to wait till the absences actually occur to then go back and recover them through Saturday Academy. So you would see even next year in full swing, Saturday Academy would probably start late September, early October. You want to just give that, you know, 45-day buffer of, of absences to recover. And to that point, we'll see, we'll see the absence recovery occur. So if you were to say, give me a report in December on what's happening, um, it'll look a lot different in April because we'll have, we'll have more interest developed, um, iron out any wrinkles, and then the word will spread with kids that it's a fun thing to do. And of course, we'll have more absences to recover because they will later in the year.
Yeah. And now that we, we're aligning our curriculum with the state, um, testing and stuff like that, we, you know, it might be more interesting for the kids to know that they're, it might give them some positive vibes, like we're doing better. We're coming here because we're gonna now do better with our curriculum because it's gonna be aligned with the state. So it might be more interesting for them.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I know that it will be successful.
Yeah.
I know kids will come. I know students will come. They'll come for different reasons, but kids will come because it provides us an opportunity that they didn't have before.
Right.
And it'll, it's a win-win for us, even if, you know, we're great to recover the absence, but also just to give that student, that opportunity on Saturday to do some enriching academic challenging activities.
Hey, I don't have any more.
And our goal is to have our first one on October 19th. And so the great thing about program as well is that we're working with food services to ensure that there's uh, nutritional snacks for them during this timeframe. And so it is taking, um, some collaboration between departments at the district office, but also at the school sites to ensure that we have teachers, um, they're ready to, to do this in addition with site lead at every school, um, because we want to make sure we do it right.
Yeah. I have, um, a question as well. Under strategies to increase attendance and enrollment as well. Um, under parent education and parent engagement, especially with elementary, uh, usually it's not the student that's staying behind. It's usually done by a parent. So what are we doing specifically? Or, uh, to encourage that parent education and the parent engagement to make sure that they know how important it is for their child to be at school every day?
Oh yeah, good question. Thank you. So, um, Ms. Gonzalez, Alicia Gonzalez is our, our family and parent coordinator. She's been, um, working with the school sites and she is putting on a number of activities at different sites to educate our parents, both, um, our newcomer parents, um, parents, migrant parents, and the, the remainder of the parents that are just, so that we can provide educational opportunities about good parenting, but also are doing activities where we have parent and uh, child activities in the evening that they might not otherwise be able to participate in. So there's like, we've had a paint night. We've had science nights. We've had nights where they get to do a science project together so the families can see what their children are learning, things that are really engaging activities, making education, um, exciting. Also, we'll start to, um, develop college and career information for the families so that they can see what the, our opportunities are out there for their, for their students through, um, our CTE programs and also through our community colleges and, and our four-year colleges.
What grade level does that start at?
Well, we start in the elementary school, so it's started at.
That's good.
Yeah.
That's good.
TK or K, yeah.
It's something to look, uh, towards.
Yes.
Okay.
I know this might be thinking out of the box, but I, I do remember Dr. Shepherd, when we had students that couldn't come to classes, not that they didn't want to, it's that they didn't have transportation to get there. So, so I don't want to coddle anybody or enable because everybody needs to be accountable for themselves. But what if we have a student that really wants to come to Saturday School, but they have no way of getting here? That's on them?
No, I mean, I want to see every kid be able to participate in everything that we offer. And so it's, it's, it's always gonna be a case-by-case basis. I wouldn't say it's a, it's a flat no. Saturday Academy typically would say that it's not something that's offered because you certainly could financially, wouldn't be able to offer it to every student or large numbers. But if a family came to us that definitely demonstrated a need, we have the ability through this community school grant funding to provide that, um, transportation on a case-by-case basis. I wouldn't want to see any child not be able to participate.
That sounds great, yes.
I, I will add one thing here. I, I think attendance is a responsibility for everyone. Uh, all the departments, uh, even our communications. I know we spend time even, uh, putting in our, uh, newspaper ads, how to get parents involved, come to school, TK registration, any way possible, uh, whenever we, uh, are out and about in the city, connecting with families. Um, when we're at back-to-school nights, when teachers are calling their parents, when homeschool liaisons are calling, all those are factors into this. Um, there is another thing that we didn't have here, but it's also something, it's not the most fun thing to talk about, is the group of students that, uh, are coming from some homes that are very challenged, sometimes, uh, criminally challenged. And we have a list of students, we've been working with the police department on students who have had more than 80 days missed last year and this year already started not coming. A lot of those have binge warrants, criminal activity happening that we don't feel safe knocking at the doors that we now have police department support. So that's something that Commander Garza Garcia is connecting with the SROs here. I gave them the list and they're gonna be, uh, knocking on the doors, connecting with those families because those students, we actually highlighted out of the list of, I think, from your department, David, like 30 some students. That's a lot. That, that's gonna move those numbers. At 30 students don't come and, and you see the list and you see the, uh, penal codes that are happening, uh, on the family level, right? Those are some dire needs that are happening here in Selma, some major stuff, guys. And those students are at home. Who knows if they're not being allowed to go to school. Things are so bad. And so it's hard to even provide the service. And our own people are, are not the appropriate group to go and knock on those doors to try to have this conversation with those families. The police department comes in. So the police is helping us out. I want to shout out to the police department for, uh, taking that list, saying, hey, we're gonna go knock on those doors, work those families, figure out what we can do because those kids are most detriment, uh, concerned when it comes to attendance. We're talking massive attendance needs, 80, 90, 100-plus days of miss school.
I think that's amazing that we're reaching out to everyone and trying, reaching out to make sure that they have the opportunity to attend this and be part of the community. That makes a major difference.
All right. Are there any other questions? No. Thank you, Dr. Dillon.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Well, we have one more thing because the big spotlight. We have, we have Indianola here. We want to hear from a school principal.
We promise to be brief, but, um, I agree with Mrs. Alanis. I think there are some great things happening here and some unified with the, um, Community Schools Grant. My name is Monica Chopp. I'm the principal at Indianola Elementary School, and it's my pleasure to serve our community and improving this area. Um, this evening, I would like to introduce our community school liaison. Her name is Irene Segoviano, and she'd like to share some things that we're doing as part of the Community Schools Grant in order to connect students and engage them in the school setting.
Hello. Thank you, Irene Segoviano. Thank you for having me. Um, homeschool liaison of Indianola Warriors. Sorry. We love our families and they love us. Um, as it correlates to the four pillars of the, uh, Community School Grant, um, we have supports and resources in place to make sure that we meet that criteria. Um, basically to do what we said we're gonna do. Um, student integrated supports, extended learning opportunities, parent engagement, um, collaborative leadership practices. So to my knowledge, you provided a pamphlet or the first page, you'll see our monthly newsletter. We push that out via Parentsware. Um, it has pertinent details such as events, but also resourceful information as well. For example, this week's current parent teacher conference, um, our mental health, uh, sessions and meet with admin and support team to come in October. Um, and then our recently parent engagement that we had, that was a huge success, Donuts with Dear Ones. You'll see it at the, uh, bottom left. That was two weeks ago. And I want to highlight that that was a successful event because of these strong partnerships that we hold at Indianola. Um, we have a strong administration. We have a, an amazing site full of staff members that are willing to support in any way, and we have a very highly-involved parents' club. And that's our community members, right? Um, they support the students, their students that attend Indianola, but all of our students that attend there prosper because of it and they benefit because of it. So I just wanted to highlight that we're very fortunate to have each other um, on our campus. On the next page, you'll see information that pertains to our before and after-school extended learning program. We are the only school that provides before extended learning. Um, students are dropped off at 6:45, so that's been a crucial component of support to our families. Um, I have connected with our site elo coordinator, Anna Allen. Um, supports will launch next Tuesday, positive connections that will be outside of instruction hours. Um, really, and it's a space for students to recognize that they matter. Um, and that they belong because I know firsthand when students possess that they are tremendously far better, the outcomes are better, whether it be academically, attendance, and behaviorally, or all three at the same time. Um, on the next page, you'll see just a collage that I've kind of put together just to talk a little bit about each point on the top. Name a student. I know every student by name on that campus. Most first and last. I know them whatever car they're attached to. I know their siblings. I know their cousins. I know the faces that drop those students off and those that pick them up. I will say that I know parents have expressed that they appreciate that because it shows an investment. We're paying attention and to the students that are acknowledged by name, um, their face, their faces light up. I mean, at that very minute moment, there's a starlight on them. They're recognized, not just by a good morning, not just by, hey, how are you doing? But because we know their name, and that means more, right? Um, you'll see to the left, I realize that the picture doesn't really show much, but it's a punch card. Um, I hold punch cards for students who just need that additional support of recognition that they, um, remember that it does matter that they're here. Um, I think it's super cool that most often they'll come and find me and say, hey, I'm here, I'm here, I'm here. So every day that they're here or are present for school, I punch out a hole. After they've reached 10 and they've completed a card every Friday, if they have a card completed, they earn an incentive. Um, so I think that's pretty cool. I've seen firsthand that students look forward to just even that alone. I mean, for some of us, we might think that's super minimal, but it's huge and I see the progress. Um, some of the other pictures on top, you'll see Kindness Club, Attendance Club. Those are some SCL, um, activities that either myself or PBIS supports do with students. Below, you'll see assemblies that we've offered. This picture, needless to say, that we keep it stocked at Indianola. We know that the data shows that when students have something to look forward to every single day, they're more inclined to come. I mean, we already see that based off of this year. So whether it be Monday attendance activities during lunch recess, Tuesday kindness club during lunch, Wednesday, when we have scheduled assemblies, those take place, uh, Thursday attendance clubs during lunch, and Friday, when they're recognized, whether copying good tickets via, uh, via staff members and PBIS or by myself because they've completed a punch card. Um, and every single morning, positive connections with PBIS. I mean, there is something constantly going on. And we've seen already how the absence is, wow, okay, look at this day. So we've seen how there's a decline and having had something available to students to look forward to rather than, okay, tomorrow we're going to school, which that should be enough, but you know, the kiddos that we serve, we, we need a whole lot more because they're super busy. Um, on the next two pages are really just a printout of two of the pictures you've seen on the previous collage. I thought you'd like to read what some of these students have wrote. Um, the first one is a flower, and really I am awesome because these spaces allow the student to be creative. I tell them there's no right or wrong answer, but sometimes students need that space to reflect on the value that they hold, that every single one of them matter in a different way or the same. Um, and they prosper because of it when they're invested in themselves, reflecting how great they are in their own personal way. Um, I want to, I didn't have this jotted down, but I wanted to piggyback on some of the questions that you had, um, that were directed for Dr. Dillon in terms of parent engagement. Just to highlight some of the stuff that we are gonna offer at Indianola is a movie night. So towards June, we're gonna offer, um, an opportunity for parents and families to come out. We're, we intend to have like one of those big screens and have a movie. Parents Club again supports us. They're gonna take care of whether it be popcorn, drinks, pizza. Another one that we're gonna have is, um, Thanksgiving. We're gonna have soup and where we offer clothing. We're gonna have a clothing drive. We're gonna have Warrior Winter Wonderland in December. Um, there was another one important that I can't think of right now. Oh, Career Day. Career Day, sorry. My brain kind of had a moment there. We're gonna offer that during the day, but we're gonna provide the opportunity for parents to come with their students. So it's, it's gonna be huge. We had one last year. We had the fire department. We had Fresno County probation come out. Um, but this year, we look to have several different career opportunities that students can see and parents can kind of visit with them because I think sometimes parents aren't aware of what's out there. Um, in closing, our school seamlessly collaborates with one another. I can confidently say, whether it be our principal, Mrs. Choppa, Mrs. Baca, our program director, I myself, PBIS, SDC teachers, SDC aides, intervention teachers, I'm confidently saying that we are successful for our students because we will do what's necessary that benefits the students at the end of the day. That's the end game. And I truly want to say thank you to your, to our board members because without you and your support and the support of our district members that make this community grant successful and make it possible for me to be in this position. Um, it truly means a lot because I know our families are, sorry, I'm getting emotional. I, I know it means a lot to our families. The stories that I hear and conversations that otherwise wouldn't have taken place had I not been able to give, been given this opportunity to be in this position. So I truly want to say thank you for supporting us and all the hard work you do to ensure that we have your back and we have your support. And thank you for giving me this platform to share all the exciting stuff that we're doing at Indianola.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great work you guys are doing out there, so keep it up, you know.
Yeah, you guys do amazing work over there.
All right, so we're gonna move into the facilities. DSA Inspector Kaz amended proposal for the restroom modernization project. The fiscal impact is sixty-five thousand funding sources bond funds.
Yes, thank you. So DSA Inspector Kaz submitted a proposal for services for four hundred and sixty hours for the restroom modernization project with the initial scope of work with the cost of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred. At that time, the district decided to change the schedule of the project and stagger the school sites, so it wasn't all heavily impacted all at once. And when, in doing that, that extended the length of the project. And so in, as a result, the, the project duration, the increase of hours went from four hundred and sixty to nine hundred and sixty. So the the inspector cause did submit a revised proposal at that time to include the additional five hundred hours. And I just want to point out that this is an item that was tabled, it was first brought to you in August, and it was tabled because you needed more information. At that time, we thought it was a miscalculation of hours. And then after it was tabled and there more information was needed, rightfully so, we did look into it and looked through, this started a year ago with different administration and different personnel at the time. And so it did take us a little bit of time to collect the data. And it was just a matter of not informing the inspector of the addendum, the amendment that was made for the project. And so in summary, and the results of the investigation that we did, it is my opinion that the district is responsible for paying for the additional sixty-five thousand. That this revised proposal is stating for Inspector Cause.
We brought Kaz here.
Yes, and I do want to point out that the, you know, this isn't, you know, the traditional quote unquote change order. This is something that in response to the district changing the timeline, this was in response to extending how long it was gonna take to complete the project. So this is something that the number of hours and the cost would have been the same regardless, because once we made that change and extended that, the hours had to change as well. So when we made that change to the, when the addendum was sent out back in November, it was after his initial proposal. So this is now, in a sense, correcting his proposal to line up with our new timeline.
We have Teeter here and Kaz, if there are any questions you guys have.
I have a question. If anybody wants to go before me, that's anything. Anybody else want to go before?
I've got questions, dovetail or whatever, but so the scope of the job wasn't changed, it was simply the duration that was changed.
Correct.
So there's no more work that was being done, it's just a matter of how long it was stretched out.
So initially, when this was first advertised back in October of last year, the, if I recall correctly, all of the sites were gonna be done simultaneously, and it was gonna be approximately a hundred and eighty days. When the decision was made to, again, stretch that out and do one school site at a time, that essentially doubled the timeline. So if you're looking at it from an inspector's point of view, he's having to now inspect every school site as they are being completed for, now we're looking at over a year, years time.
Rosemary, you have a question?
I have a comment, not a question.
Yes.
I do have a question. So when you guys brought this to us last month, you guys, it was totally different than it was now. So you guys didn't give us the full story, you guys just gave us half a story.
So at that, so the, what happened here is, again, this was a year ago, and so
But still, when you guys brought it to us, we were assuming one thing, but we didn't, you guys didn't bring us all the information.
Because we didn't, we, we had the information of the proposal, it being the rev, at that time, we thought it was a miscalculation of hours. That came from the inspector himself, and it was a misunderstanding, if you will, because we worked with Teeter to look back at the timeline of events. And again, it being a year ago, we had to comb through emails and look at previous agreements and work and look at how things unraveled. So that did take some time, because everyone that was here at that time is no longer here, and so it wasn't information readily available to us, even on the Teeter side. I believe we had Tony, who was the, the lead architect at that time, he left Teeter right in the midst of all this. I believe the assistant superintendent was also, had retired at the same time. Our new director of facilities had just joined, but I think we had a consultant. At that time, there was a lot of different changes in administration that were happening. And so, yes, I had to go back and investigate exactly the timeline. And through that, we did clarify that it was no longer a mistake or a miscalculation of hours, it was just the revision to his proposal hadn't been made when the addendum was, was, to the bid was done.
I'm gonna respectfully request that when you guys bring us something, please do the full investigation before you guys bring it to us, because I was really upset last time at the meeting, because I thought that they had miscalculated and we were getting all upset about it, and come to find out, it's not their fault, it's our fault.
I
I'm asking you guys.
I completely agree. You know, I'm honestly embarrassed at having to come to you today and say, this is how the series of events happened, and that I didn't have this information on hand when I first presented it to you. So yes, I fully agree that we'll make sure this doesn't happen again, and we have all the information when we bring it to board.
Thank you.
My question. My question's a little different. Now, you say Kaz is here, right?
Yes, he is.
So my question to them is, what we're talking about here is the sixty-five thousand, according to the memo. Okay, that's valid, that's good, where you're saying that's a correct number to go with.
Yes.
At that point, you're finding what you're looking at, that's technically what it comes out to because of the miscommunication.
Yes, so had, so what happened is he gave the proposal back in, and it was board approved November fourteenth of last year. Then the addendum was released to change the bid package, and that was the following week. So
And so, and where's your, where's the Kaz rep?
Okay. Do you mind coming up, Kaz, up to the podium, please?
And so this, this number you're agreeing is valid in your honor. The, the number of the sixty-five thousand is what you're agreeing to in your honor, correct? According to your memo.
Is that the?
The fetish to one?
No, he's asking if this revision for an additional sixty-five thousand is.
Right. That was my question, because looking at the offer validity, validity date, we're past that. But since he said he'll honor it, we're good.
Yes, yes, he, he said he would honor that.
All right, yeah, this is for the three schools, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
So this, so if I'm understanding this correctly, we, we get an IOR, right, our inspector Kaz puts in a number. Then we, this is the job that went to rebid, right?
Yes.
We split it up. Then it goes to rebid, Taylor does their magic with it. Kaz doesn't catch the fact that it changed, and now, now here we are. Right kind of deal?
So the, when an addendum is made for the bid info, that's mostly for the construction companies that are gonna bid for that. The inspector is somebody that we hire, once it's finalized, and we give him the, the, the project, so to speak.
He didn't, he didn't have the scope of what we were doing when he gave us his first number.
He had the original scope at that time.
Oh, just not the length.
The original scope was like a hundred and eighty days, because the, all the sites were gonna be done simultaneously.
He didn't have the duration.
We changed it, when we made the decision to stagger the, or the projects, it was already after he had submitted his proposal, and we didn't communicate back to him that that change was made.
So the district missed that?
Yes.
Was Teeter, Teeter was involved, right?
Yes.
Teeter was our architect. Were they involved in any other capacity other than just an architect? Were they helping project manage the job?
So their scope and
I see him shaking his head back there, he's like, no, heck no.
So, you know, the services that we have with Teeter is, you know, strictly, you know, design, architects, and that kind of thing. There is some facilitation of the different pieces, but it's nowhere near project management, which is why we, you know, need the director of facilities to help with that piece.
All right, is there any other question? If not, may I have a motion for this item?
This was our fault, right?
Yes, this is the district responsibility.
We'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll check, I'll second.
All right, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody pose? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry for the miscommunication. We apologize.
All right, we're moving into the Ed Services Instruction Material Program, greater TK twelve. And go ahead.
Thank you. We have two items that are items that we bring to the board each year at this time of the school year. The first one is a public hearing of instructional materials, which states that we have adequate textbooks and that they are appropriately placed at the school sites and in the hands of our students. And the second one is the resolution regarding the sufficiency of these instructional materials. At this moment, we can open up to public hearing. Do we have any speakers for this agenda item in the audience?
Are there any, anyone out there in public hearing on this matter? Come up to the, give us a yellow card? Nope, okay, all right, yep. So public hearing is closed now, move, go ahead, move to the resolution.
Thank you. So now we will move into the action item concerning Resolution FY twenty-five dash fifteen. The resolution states that for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the Selma Unified School District has provided each pupil with sufficient textbooks and instructional materials aligned to the academic content standards and consistent with the cycles and content of the curriculum frameworks.
All right, is there any questions from the board?
I have a question. So this curriculum sufficiency that we're approving today is just saying that we have textbooks? Or that the curriculum standards of aligned textbooks, what is?
Yes, good question. It's basically saying that we have the textbooks in the students' hands. So it's something, yep, it's something that we do annually at this time of the year.
And it says standards aligned textbooks, what does that mean?
Yes, so just that the curriculum that we use have been, has been vetted through and aligned with the standard. So typically, when we do an adoption, we do have a list of curriculum that is aligned and state approved. And so that's typically what we choose from, so we've used that system for several years now.
Okay, so is it aligned with the state testing?
It would be, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's not only aligned with the state testing, it aligns with the California state standards, which is what has been adopted by all schools, public schools, and so, yes, it is. You do have the California that weighs in on which ones they recommend. And then it's up to us to pilot them and make a final decision to find what's best aligned, and what we find is the best one for students. That eventually then does best for the state accountability assessment.
Okay, so then when they, when, when they have this aligned textbooks, and they, we're teaching them off of these textbooks, and they go take the state test, they're aligned.
Correct, because they're aligned with the state standards.
They're aligned, so they're not gonna get over there and say, oh, we were never taught this.
They're aligned as much as the person who's teaching it is utilizing the resources that are aligned.
Okay, and we're gonna make sure that they're aligned.
That is the job of all of us, yes.
Yes, we're saying that every child has the right, so is there some kind of an inventory that we take from this?
Yes, great question. We do, we actually, when we order out of our curriculum department, we typically will send out all of the consumables and everything. Typically, we're working with the program manager. And so every year at the, in July, we start a curriculum needed page. And so that's where if there are, you know, some student workbooks that were sent to another school site, and there's others that need it, then we work with program managers to ensure that we fulfill all of those pieces. And we've done actually a really good job, program managers have done a great job at ensuring that all curriculum that's needed is added to that worksheet. And so in Ed Services Department, then we go through and make sure that, that they need, they have what they need.
I have one more question. So we're giving these kids the textbooks, are our teachers receiving the textbooks timely also to teach the kids?
Yes, so it's also inclusive of the teacher's additions.
Okay.
All right, is there any other question? All right, may I have a motion to adopt this Resolution twenty-five dash one five?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into the item number two. Approval of Navigate three sixty Lice. It's a fiscal impact is a twelve thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars, three years agreements, funding sources, LCAP.
Our district has established protocols such as the District Emergency Operation Plan, which uses Raptor, the Raptor system to enhance the response system that we have to school emergencies. We've recognized that we need, we have a need for a more comprehensive training portion for our leaders and staff. And so we're seeking an online platform, Navigate three sixty, to ensure consistent training across the district. Navigate three sixty offers an efficient and cost-effective way to ensure that we train all staff in best practices for responding to active assailants. This platform includes the ALICE methodology, which stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. The total investment for the three-year subscription is just over twelve thousand dollars, which will be funded out of our LCAP budget.
All right, is there any questions on this?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Can I ask a question before we move on? When we, a couple of years ago, when we had that active shooter going on, we had, we had put into place some guidelines.
Yes, absolutely. That is a great example of what ALICE would be. So it's the reunification, the organization of when something like this happens, what do we do as a school site and as the district to ensure that we have a system and process in place? ALICE and Navigate three sixty will give us the platform for that online training to enhance what we already have in place.
And when I got here, it is good system that we have, this just keeps making it better. So, you know, to me, for that kind of price, with this type of stuff, you, you go all the way.
Unfortunately, we're at that counter.
And it's a three-year subscription, so it's, it's a pretty, pretty good deal.
It's worth it.
Yeah, it is.
We had a motion from Rosemary, is this second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into the intern agreement, speech languages pathologist, assistant, fiscal impact. I guess this is MOU or something?
Correct, yes. So the next item is a request to approve an MOU between Selma Unified and Field College and State Center Community College. We have had similar MOUs in the past with other colleges, and these really provide an opportunity for us to place up and coming speech language pathologists and assistants in our district. This MOU does not have a fiscal impact. And it gives us an opportunity to provide us, an opportunity to build our workforce. And also, we recognize that speech language pathologists are hard to fill jobs, and so it promotes Selma Unified when we, when we partner with the colleges.
Which colleges are these?
Field College and State Center Community College, the Madera area.
Is there any questions from the board?
No, I'll make the motion.
I second.
All, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries. Termination of contract speech pathology group, fiscal impact, action item, I guess again.
Yes, and so these last few items that I have actually go together. But both will require different actions. So the first one, which is item number four, is a request to terminate an existing contract with SPG, which is the Speech Pathology Group. We have researched and actually have found that we can provide better service to our students and have a savings if we amend the contract, the current contract that we have with STL, which is the Speech Therapy Link. STL will provide in-person speech services to our students versus virtual speech services that we were receiving through SPG. versus virtual speech services that we were receiving through SPG.
So we are saving some money then?
We're saving money and instead of doing virtual speech classes, um, we would actually have an in-person, um, uh, support for our students.
Right, is there any questions from the board?
There's no, uh, contract buyout or anything for terminating the contract?
No, um, we were able to review the contract and we just had to have a thirty-day termination notice, uh, presented to, to the group.
A motion to approve. I second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, motion carries, this is for four and five together or?
No.
Oh.
You wanted to separate.
Separate.
Okay. Um, five contract addendum, uh, speech therapy link, fiscal impact is hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred forty. Is there any questions on that one? Can I get a motion on that?
This is gonna be all in person, right?
Correct. Yes, so, um, what happens is the per, um, the person that's actually working with a student is in person. They'll receive support from virtual, um, but that's just for, for the in-person support.
So that's why the parents that watch this later on can understand that we just terminated a contract that was virtual, meaning that it would, will go online and replacing it with a contract that is slightly cheaper, it's cheaper, but it's also in person. And we all know in-person interaction has a lot more benefit than virtual in this particular instance.
Correct, and especially when we're, we're talking about students who need speech support, right? Because sometimes it's really challenging to hear over a video call, uh, versus actually having a person right there with you.
That's great.
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion.
All right, there's a motion by Mark, is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, and, uh, we're moving into the considered agenda. Item listed under the considered agendas are considered to be routine and are acted on by the Board of Trustees in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board board unless the member of the board staff or public requests specific item be discussed and are removed from the considered agenda. It is understood that the administration recommending approval on all considered items, each item on a considered agenda approved by the member of the governing board shall be deemed to be when considered in a full and adopted as recommended. Is there any items that needs to be discussed or?
I have two.
Which items?
Um, I think in the accounts payable, I'm looking at Gale Group renewal for ten thousand, seven hundred and nine, do we know what that's for?
We will move those item out.
Oh, okay.
And, uh.
And Care Solis, Solis, um, Agreement for Services for eighteen thousand, three hundred.
All right, we will move those item and, uh, we will vote on the left on the rest of the item, may I have a motion?
I make a motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
All right.
All right, uh, let's discuss on the, um, those item, um, account payable.
A Gale Group renewal for ten thousand, seven hundred and nine? Do we know what that's for? Can you guys refresh my memory?
Hey, John.
I, I, I think it's in the, I, I just wrote it down, but it's in the accounts payables.
It's not alphabetical, what was the name again on it?
Gale Group Renewal.
That is a big.
Well, you guys are looking for that, we can go to, oh.
Uh, renewal Gale Group, uh, uh, high school.
Okay.
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Renewal Gale Group Selma High School, ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
Is that that one, okay. And you had another one, just, uh.
Yes.
Care Solis.
Care Solis, so we in, in, uh, May, uh, May twenty-eighth, uh, meeting, we approved a three-year contract, um, for Care Solis. And it was gonna go up to twenty twenty-six, but it's here again for the same period, uh, for another eighteen thousand, three hundred, when we've, it's overlapping. So our first contract in, in, in May twenty-eighth went all the way up to contract year of twenty twenty-six. So this contract goes from twenty-five, twenty-six, so I'm wondering why?
Yeah, so, and, and I can ask if, if in, in future, it always is more helpful, if, if you, uh, if you caught it tonight, you caught it tonight, but if you can catch it before, fiscal can actually dig in with their team and have the answer right now, we probably have to get the answer to you at another day.
Okay, so can we table that one?
With regard on the, the Gale one, I'm getting information that it, that's for the high, uh, high school's library database.
Okay.
That includes reference materials and online access.
Okay, that's perfect, uh, but, uh, can we table the Care Solis, can we get the overlapping contract dates fixed?
Care Solis tabled.
Do we need to approve the?
We will vote on the Gale.
Because I'm the one.
One.
We do.
The other one, we're gonna table it out later.
I make a motion to approve Gale.
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, anybody pose? All right, the other ones we will table it out.
Do we have to make a motion to table it?
Yeah.
I make a motion to table Care Solis contract for eighteen thousand, three hundred.
Is there a second to it?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, all right. Okay, so moving. Okay, board report. All right, Mr., we'll start with you, Mr. Medina.
Well, just wanna tell our football team, congratulations against Reedley.
Yeah.
The, other than that, there isn't a whole lot for me to report on that, that school related here. Lot of stuff on the other side, but nothing that's anything amusing. So that's pretty much all I got.
Great. All right, uh, Rosemary?
Yes, I did talk to, um, fiscal, Jessica, regarding updating us on the American, uh, Resource Plan for the homelessness children and youth. How much money did we get from the state and what is the balance? So she's gonna go ahead and update the board on that next time.
I actually have that information.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So the total allocation that we received back in twenty-one, twenty-two was fifty-seven.
Hold on, can you kind of explain to the board what it's for?
Oh, sure.
Cause I, I don't know if everybody.
Yeah, so the, this is, uh, funding specifically for homeless in our community. And so, um, I think Raquel can speak to some of the ways that we're using it, but, um, more specifically on the funding is, uh, fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. And we have to spend the funding by September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And we currently have six thousand, eight hundred dollars left of that, that is encumbered, um, and will be expended, uh, by the deadline.
And some of this stuff in other districts are used for housing or tokens for the buses. It's just to help families or children that are experiencing homelessness. And I thought it was a great, great resource that I didn't know anything about, so I'm really happy that we're, uh, utilizing that.
I think we've helped with like, um, reimbursements, backpacks for students, fuel reimbursements for transportation costs, those types of things. A variety of, uh, ways we've helped the, our, uh, homeless in our community.
And one of the other things I wanna bring up, thank you for, thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
On the spot, but thank you. Um, one of the things that I was reading about Governor Davis is that they're thinking about changing the, the, uh, enrollment rate, uh, by how many children are enrolled as opposed to?
ADA.
ADA. So I think that would help us, but then
Yeah.
at the end, if the kids are here at the beginning of the year and then they leave us, well, they take that money back. You know, it's just new and it's something that I was wondering if, uh, Jessica and Ed had.
Yeah, I've seen it come through, uh, it, it depends on how many days are not here, but most likely would, it, the money would stay with us from what I read from the governor Newsom's letter, uh, but that's good. I mean, he's trying to figure out a way to.
Yeah.
Provide that to districts.
And I think that, that would help the district with the, um.
That's a, a better way of doing business.
Yes.
Yeah, cause enrollment's dropping everywhere, California's losing students left and right, so, yeah.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
All right, Mrs. Kessler?
Uh, not much, I, um, attended Eric White Donuts with, with beer ones. I guess that was a deer one, um, lots and lots of people, oh my gosh, there was a lot of people. And, um, um, that particular day there, uh, at the beginning of the the, the momentus line to get in, where we were greeted by some very nice police officers saying hello, good morning and all that stuff. It was one of those days where we were taking lots of precaution, so I appreciated that. And, um, um, so it was a very well attended, um, according to Principal Salsito, they ran out of coffee. So that was the only thing, they ran out of coffee, well, she said, we'll have more coffee next year. And, um, um, I attended, um, Margie Sally's Services, uh, the other day and, um, that's about.
Awesome. Mr. Fedora?
What do you pick, right? I just wanted, I do, I sound like a broken record every week, but I honestly mean it. I, I love, every time I see Selma, right? You go to a football game, you go to a, a different game, you're going down the street. Um, you just see Selma and I'm so proud of you guys and every, every time I see you guys, you're a little disappointed you're sitting down right now because, you know, usually Mr. Lima's standing up and doing something, but. But you guys, you guys are awesome. Um, I'm just proud of you all.
Great.
That's all I got.
Thank you, and, uh, my behalf of Selma Rotary Clubs, I had opportunities to go to Terry Elementary School, you know, give up the dictionary. That was really good, I seen the projects updates out there, you know? And I'm glad that there's a lot going on, putting new modular buildings, getting ground preps. So, um, very happy that construction, hopefully, you know, we get those done, you know? And to see our schools better shapes and continues that, so, thank you. We move into the superintendent's board.
Okay, I'd like to highlight a few upcoming events for Selma Unified Community. This Saturday, September twenty-eighth, we'll be hosting the Student Family Resource Fair right here at Selma High School in the Quad Area from eight to twelve. Great opportunity to connect with resources and support for our students, families in our community. Also, don't miss out on our talented Selma High School FFA students at the Big Fresno Fair running from October second through October fourteenth. Uh, mark your calendars for Friday, uh, as Selma High School Football Team will be on the field for their homecoming game. As you guys already know, it's come out with support. Uh, also, I'd like to mention September is Suicide Prevention Month. And a big shout out to Kristy, one of our own, Kristy Rangel, for speaking at the webinar hosted by Tony Thurman, who's our state superintendent. That's very cool, uh, very awesome.
Good job.
And, uh, we want to reward our hardworking students who put up so much time to get four-point O. Four-point O is not easy to get. Well, all of those students, long hours spent hitting the books will pay off for Fresno County students at the Big Fresno Fair for the four-point O Students and Above Program. This program invites all eighth grade through the twelfth grade students in Fresno County whose GPA is four-point O, uh, and above, and they get in for free. So on Wednesday, October second, okay? Uh, we'll be honoring the students, so qualified students will have a chance to win scholarships, laptops, and even a chance to win a brand-new Toyota Corolla. Students must be present to win. So this is the thirteenth annual, uh, it's at six-thirty PM on October second. Last year, we had two student winners who got scholarships. I thought we were gonna get the car, the guy goes, and for the Toyota Corolla, Frobs, anger, I'm like, oh. Got me with the S and then it turned into Sanger. This year, we have two hundred and eighty-seven eligible students from eighth grade to twelfth, yeah. That's pretty amazing. Uh, we'll be there, I'll be there to cheer them on on October second at six-thirty PM, that'll be a great night. So, uh, good luck, I hope their name gets picked and that they get a scholarship or even a car. And that's it for me.
Yeah, the, their Source's Fair, is that on our website too?
That's, uh, I'm sure where all those are, the, we sent out the information via different social medias, Parents Square, all of the different areas, yeah.
Perfect, yeah, that sounds good. Well, um, other than that is, may I have, may I get a motion for adjourned this meeting?
I make a motion.
I'll second, well, Mark, all favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you, have a great rest of the week and thank you to the staff, principal, teachers and everyone, have a good night.